So there was my name, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Now, we'll begin the Tokyo Conference 2022 organized by the Genron NPO. I am Yuho Nishimura, Director of the International Department of the Genron NPO. I have an honor to serve as an overall moderator for today's symposium. I'd like to thank the panelists taking part today for their cooperation and those of you who are joining us online from overseas despite the time difference. This year's Tokyo Conference is being held against a backdrop where the international order is significantly disrupted by Russia's aggression against Ukraine and the conflict between the US and China. In a time of instability, it is important for democratic countries who share a common set of values such as freedom, democracy, multilateralism, and the rule of law to come together to discuss the various issues facing the world and to communicate the discussions at home and abroad. The international order which has supported freedom and democracy in the world is now being shaken. We will discuss how we democracies should coordinate and promote multilateral cooperation in the face of this challenge. This year's Tokyo Conference will focus on three themes: How should the world deal with Russia's aggression? The Taiwan issue? And what can be done to revive the disintegrating international order? We have experts representing ten countries across the world discuss these issues. Without further ado, Yasushi Kudo, President of the Genron NPO, will give us opening remarks.
Good afternoon. Good evening, dear friends. I wish we could have met in Tokyo. The pandemic has been a difficult situation next year, hopefully. Now, this year's Tokyo Conference, it's always some kind of a critical moment, but this year particularly, this is a critical situation where our resolve is being tested. There are no prospects for the end of the war in Ukraine, no prospects for ceasefire, massacre of citizens ongoing, and many people now see clearly that the international order is on the brink of death and the world is being asked to rebuild that as their effort. The unilateral military action taken by Russia is essentially a ruthless attack on cities. In Kiev, the capital city, as we speak today, citizens are fighting a desperate fight. What we are seeing is an autocrat deceiving its own people and taking lives of another nation without any hesitation. The unilateral military aggression is a complete denial of integrity of territory and sovereignty as defined by the UN Charter. The UN or the world is unable to act to stop that. In Ukraine, over 2.5 million citizens have left their country. On the other hand, many citizens have stayed to fight. The world has condemned this situation. There is an unprecedented economic sanction ongoing. Many enterprises have left Russia. What can the world do in the midst of this crisis? What efforts have been asked of the world for its future? That is the awareness that we bring to the Tokyo Conference, all of us. Our position at Genron NPO is freedom, upholding freedom, democracy, and rule of law and global cooperation. The values that we would like to protect are facing a serious challenge and the world is destabilizing. It was five years ago that the Tokyo Conference was kicked off. At our proposal, friends from the US, Germany, France, the UK, Italy, Canada, in other words, G7 member countries, and India, Brazil, Singapore, joined, all ten countries and all representatives of think tanks gathered in Tokyo. Every year, we debate and we discuss and have proposed many consensus-based proposals to the G7 chair countries. Every time, we have proposed taking on global issues under a cooperative partnership by upholding freedom, democracy, and rule of law. The world is now fragmented. In order not to aggravate that, there is only one way to fight global threats such as climate change and COVID-19, which is cooperation. Otherwise, it's impossible. Five years since then, with US-China tensions worsening, the world is even more unstable. There is more area for security rather than cooperation. The world is more fragmented. Military aggression by Russia was done, conducted by one dictator. There are two things that I am paying special focus on, attention to in terms of the world's reaction to the invasion, that is, Ukrainian citizens are garnering empathy from around the world because of their actions to save their homeland and their families. The Russian leader is deceiving its people despite the clear actions of atrocities and the world is condemning such actions. There is a circle of empathy moving, public opinion globally, and expanding the circle of solidarity. The world is connected, the world economies mutually dependent, the information platform is all over the world, and the press is staking their lives to report the truth. There is unprecedented global sanctions imposed as well. That is the backdrop to which the citizens are being supportive of such actions. In this crisis, the values of freedom and democracy are essential to peace. Optimistically speaking, perhaps, the end of autocracy, losing global empathy, is essentially the change, historical change that we're witnesses. Who will protect international peace and stability? That is another issue. The US has unified the world to protect democracy in its fight against the autocrat, the autocracy, but will not send its forces to Ukraine, likewise for NATO, in order to avoid World War III. Who will stop this invasion of territory and sovereignty? This country is a nuclear power, is a permanent member of the Security Council. Unless we find that answer, the world will be dependent on the nuclear umbrella under respective alliances. Is this the future that we want for the world? The UN has limits, but what's been asked of is an existential one for the UN. There are many things that the UN cannot do, but not everything is impossible. During the 1950 General Assembly, the Unified Action for Peace, when the Security Council is dysfunctional, then there is power delegated to the General Assembly. In 1956, there were two emergency special sessions. The USSR intervened in a Hungarian incident. The UN did nothing, but during the Suez Incident, the UN emergency force was founded by a decision of the General Assembly, is sent to Egypt as well. Now, the monitoring of the humanitarian corridors, can, is it not possible for the General Assembly to send the UN emergency force to that, to monitor the international humanitarian portal? Can the General Assembly adopt resolution to impose sanctions? That is not, that is a voice that we do not hear despite the circle of solidarity and empathy in the world. Now, this online meeting, because of time differences across ten countries, not much time can be spent on discussions. Despite that, what we are aiming to pursue during this Tokyo Conference is to help end the invasion of Ukraine, how to achieve ceasefire, how to manage the next crisis that is possibly feared in Asia, and how to restore the international order. What efforts are needed? Because this is a historical fork in the road that we all stand on. And with that notice, the 25th Tokyo Conference 2022. At this time, I would like to turn to Prime Minister Kishida's video message. Prime Minister Kishida, as you are aware, ever since the launch of this Tokyo Conference, consistently attended the conference and joined in the discussions. Mr. Kishida, as a prime minister, this time sent a message to this conference because he has huge expectations, great expectations for the role of the Tokyo Conference when the international order is being undermined.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have attended the Tokyo Conference on several occasions since it convened for the very first time. Today, I'm participating once more in this format, and I very much appreciate, I very much appreciate having this opportunity to speak to you, the distinguished participants from think tanks representing the world. The world now finds itself at the historic juncture. The foundation of the international order has been built by the international community at top determined efforts and numerous sacrifices over a great many years, but that very foundation is now threatened by Russia's aggression against Ukraine. This attempt to unilaterally change the status quo by force is an act that undermines the very foundation of not Europe alone, but rather the entire international order, including Asia. Through the international community uniting and taking resolute actions, will we be able to overcome this crisis and fully defend the foundation of the international order? This is a question before us. It is no exaggeration to say that the fate of democracy and multilateralism, the theme of today's conference, ties in with how we respond to Russia's aggression towards Ukraine. The G7, a group of nations sharing the universal values of freedom, democracy, human rights, and the rule of law, is responding resolutely to this crisis in strong unity. I myself participated in the February 24th G7 summit meeting held by video conference, and the G7 foreign ministers' meeting has also been held four times over the past two weeks. The G7, working in close cooperation, is leading the international community. At the UN General Assembly, a resolution censuring Russia was adopted by an overwhelming majority of 141 votes, far surpassing the number at the time of Russia's annexation of Crimea. Sanctions against Russia have also been unprecedented and powerful, including the freezing of assets of Russia's central bank and the exclusion of Russian banks from the SWIFT international payment system. Even Switzerland and also Singapore from Southeast Asia, which both exercise great caution before participating in international sanctions, are participating in various sanctions. Out of a strong sense of crisis towards Russia's aggression towards Ukraine, the assistance to Ukraine from various countries has been robust to a degree virtually unseen until now. The EU has taken the measure of dispensing financial assistance towards the provision of weapons to Ukraine by its member states. This is the first time such military support has been provided to a country outside the EU. Germany has also decided to provide Ukraine with surface-to-air missiles and anti-tank weapons. Japan, working in close cooperation with the G7 and the international community as a whole, has imposed stringent sanctions on Russia. Japan has frozen the assets of persons in leadership positions in the government of Russia, including President Putin, as well as the assets of Russian business oligarchs. Oligarchs participated in excluding Russian banks from the SWIFT international payment system and taken export control measures on semiconductors and other items, putting our measures fully in concert with those of the United States and the countries of Europe. In addition, with regard to assistance to Ukraine, in addition to emergency humanitarian assistance of US $100 million for Ukrainian people facing hardship whether in Ukraine or in neighboring countries, in view of the unprecedented assistance from other nations, Japan decided to provide bulletproof vests, helmets, and other self-defense forces' equipment, and has transported it to Poland using SDF aircraft. The acceptance into Japan of people who fled Ukraine for third countries has also begun. In this way, Russia's aggression towards Ukraine is already on the verge of dramatically transforming aspects of the international community. Perhaps the era that will succeed, the post-Cold War era, is about to begin. The touchstone for telling the era to succeed the post-Cold War era is the matter of whether or not the international community will respond resolutely to Russia's aggression towards Ukraine and fully defends the foundations of the international order. Despite strong pressure from the international community, substantial support and solidarity from various countries towards Ukraine, and courageous and tenacious defensive warfare of the Ukrainian side, Russia is gradually expanding its influence in various areas of Ukraine. A large number of civilians have fallen victim to attacks by the Russian military on residences, schools, and hospitals. The G7 and the broader international community must unite and respond to this severe situation. We cannot accept such unilateral changes to the status quo by force or coercion in the Indo-Pacific region, and particularly not in East Asia. This point is of critical importance also from the perspective of Japan's future diplomacy and security. In East Asia, which will be on the forefront or the front line of competition between the US and China, the security environment is rapidly becoming increasingly severe, with attempts by China to unilaterally change the status quo by force or coercion in the East and South China sees cross-strait relations in which the military balance becomes increasingly lopsided and repeated missile launches by North Korea. What should be done so as not to allow this kind of unilateral change to the status quo by force or coercion in East Asia? Facing up to the increasingly severe security environment surrounding Japan and the various actions planning to change the status quo of this region with force or coercion in the background, what should be done to protect the lives and the prosperity of our citizens? In view of Russia's aggression towards Ukraine, after examining the situation in a purely practical way, we must revise our national security strategy and fundamentally reinforce Japan's own defense capacities. In addition, it is absolutely imperative that we further enhance the deterrence and response capabilities of the Japan-US alliance, which is the foundation of Japan's diplomacy and security, as well as the cornerstone of peace and prosperity in the Indo-Pacific region. And now, more than ever, as we find ourselves in the midst of a serious crisis, we should uphold and reinforce democracy and other universal values, and also multilateralism, which has a wisdom of humankind cultivated by our forbearers over years upon years of effort. Today, I'm unable to speak in great detail because of time limitations, but I wish to state that the new form of capitalism that I am advancing is an effort to squarely address the issue of how to protect the middle class, which is the basis for sound democracy. Five years ago, when I delivered an address at the Tokyo Conference, I stated that a compass within foreign policy is essential during unpredictable times, and that compass is our freedom, democracy, and other fundamental values. Now, at this critical moment, when the international order might collapse from its foundations, I have become even more assured of that conviction. Japan will lay greater emphasis on the universal values of freedom, democracy, human rights, and the rule of law, and strengthen our unity with our partners that share these universal values. Placing importance on multilateralism grounded in universal values, Japan will lead efforts by the international community to counter attempts to unilaterally change the status quo by force and coercion. In particular, in the Indo-Pacific region, deepening our cooperation with allies, like-minded countries and partner countries, including the US, Australia, India, ASEAN, and Europe, and more, and leveraging the Quad Summit meeting amongst the leaders of Japan, Australia, India, and the United States that I will host here in Tokyo within the next several months, we will work strategically to realize a free and open Indo-Pacific. Our choices and our actions now will determine the trend of the future international order. As we move towards that major turning point in eras, we must unite in resolutely countering unilateral changes to the status quo by force or coercion. As I conclude my remarks to you today, speaking on behalf of the government of Japan and the Japanese people, I wish to state once more our strong solidarity with the people of Ukraine, who are doing their utmost in taking actions to defend their sovereignty and territory, as well as their homeland and their families, even in the face of national crisis. Thank you very much. Thank you for listening. That was Prime Minister Kishida. Prime Minister Kishida's resolve to protect the foundation of the international order is a very solid one. And in order for that, the international community needs to come together and be united and take resolute actions. Now, I'd like to invite Ambassador Extraordinary and plenty potentiality of the Federal Republic of Germany to Japan, Dr. Kramer von Getze. And one of the purposes of the Tokyo Conference is to make input to the G7 presidency, because this year's conference is online, it's quite difficult to form a consensus, but I hope to have solidarity between the Tokyo Conference and the G7 presidency, that is, Germany this year. I would like to invite His Excellency Ambassador Getze.
Yeah, Yasushi Kudo, the participants, thank you very much for offering me the chance to talk to you today as the ambassador of the G7 presidency country in Japan. Prime Minister Kishida and Yasushi Kudo have already well explained and made it very clear what dramatic change we are facing. It's the dramatic return of war to Europe with horrible human losses, mass displacement of innocent civilians, and heavy economic consequences that directly affect our people and peoples and countries. We are now, for the first time since decades, facing a security threat that we already had hoped to have banished with the end of the Cold War. But as we see now, war has returned to Ukraine, where we witnessed continued Russian attacks with unrelenting intensity and brutality. And as you have also already remarked, Mr. Kudo, the aggressor is one of the P5, so one of the very countries which enjoy the privilege of permanent membership in the Security Council of the United Nations and who would claim special responsibility for world peace after World War II. As our foreign minister said in her, in her speech at the emergency special session of the United Nations General Assembly on Ukraine, Russia's war marks the dawn of a new era. It's a watershed moment. Yesterday's certainties are gone. Today, we face a new reality that none of us chose. It is a reality that President Putin has forced upon us. Russia's brutal attack on Ukraine exacerbates the threats for the existing international order that we have seen rising over the last years already, not only in Europe, but also in Asia and other parts of the world. We have to recognize that this order, which has guaranteed peace and prosperity over decades, is no longer accepted by all, and that we, the democratic nations who have helped to establish it, now need to defend it by words and by deeds. And as Prime Minister Kishida also already mentioned, we are not alone in that 141 countries followed this path at the UN Nations, United Nations General Assembly, and only four supported Russia. And as the prime minister already said, also, the European Union and its partners are united in their response together with the G7. Coherence among G7 countries has been and continues to be extremely close, with daily coordination on positions and actions to take on the highest level, on the foreign minister level, but also on the level of experts. We very much appreciate Japan's role in this. The United States, under the Biden administration, has reaffirmed its commitment to the international order and to their alliances. NATO questioned in its relevance earlier by some, has proved to be indispensable to maintaining peace and security in Europe. G7 and EU have imposed already several rounds of well-coordinated and far-reaching economic and financial sanctions, and more sanctions may follow. My own country, Germany, has drawn drastic consequences for its own security policy out of the situation. In an address before the German Bundestag, our parliament, our national parliament, on the 27th of February, Chancellor Scholz announced that we have decided to support Ukraine with weapons and other defense equipment. We are going to invest massively in our own defense with the creation of a fund of 100 billion euros and the pledge to spend more than 2% of our GDP annually on defense in the future. Germany has, or had up to now, particularly intense economic relations with Russia for decades. Russia has been our major supplier of fossil fuels, and Russia has been a huge market for German exports. So our economy has exported more than 20 billion euros in goods and services in 2021 alone to Russia. Hence, we have a lot to lose, but we are willing to pay the price. As a consequence, Germany has already stopped the pipeline project Nord Stream 2. Japan once more proved to be a reliable and constructive partner, implementing sanctions as the prime minister described, in lockstep with the other G7 partners. Japan also decided to supply Ukraine with non-lethal military equipment, deviating from a long-held principle of self-restriction. But I want to add that the rules-based international order cannot be upheld by governments and parliaments and their decisions alone. Since our democratic values, our basic human rights, our security, our prosperity, our freedom, and our way of life are in danger, it is the task for the whole society, for all of us. And this is why we have to address the public and counter false propaganda and the lies of the aggressor. Institutions like Genron NPO under your leadership, Mr. Kudo, create an invaluable space for open and rational dialogue based on facts. Let me express my appreciation for your endeavor in general and the organization of today's Tokyo Conference in particular. If Putin calculated that he could divide us, if he thought we would not be able to find a common response, we can say that so far, he has been wrong. So far, he has reached quite the opposite of what he was trying to achieve, but it is our responsibility to stay on this path and to stay united. You will discuss in one of the panels what this all means for Asia, in particular for the situation in the Taiwan Strait, and Prime Minister Kishida has already been very explicit on that. As a European ambassador here in this discussion, I would like just to add two short remarks to that discussion. We cannot accept a change of- We cannot accept a change of status quo through military force, neither in Europe nor in Asia. And the second remark is that, as we have seen with Russia's actions now, we have to take declarations of intent and the buildup of military capacities seriously. Putin has announced his revisionist policy already 2007 at the Munich Security Conference. The Russian military buildup far beyond defense needs has been obvious for many years. China intensifies its requests for the unification of Taiwan with the mainland and does not renounce the use of military force for this aim. Chinese military buildup has been very strong over the last years in the South China Sea, as well as in the East China Sea and as well with regard to its naval forces and its air force in general. But let me come back to the dramatic situation in Ukraine, which is rightfully at the forefront of our discussion. But before I finish my introduction, I would like to tell you that we should remain aware that we will only be able to offer the next generations a safe and livable place on this planet if we also tackle other huge challenges as climate change and pandemics. This is why the original themes of the German G7 Presidency still deserve attention. And I will only mention them quickly. The first is a sustainable planet, fighting climate change and seeing that countries that depend heavily on energy imports like Japan and Germany will have to understand that a strong energy policy is also part of the national security policy, so serving the needs to fight climate change and serving our own security interests. And that is why we need to reduce our dependence from fossil fuels imports. The second element of our program, the second point, is economic stability and transformation. And as has been stressed, we need a strong, rules-based economic and financial system, as well as resilient and sustainable supply chains. And we need to address market distorting practices in order to level the playing field for trade and industry. And supply chains that are already under stress due to the pandemic are now facing an additional challenge that we must meet together. Here the discussion in Europe and in Japan is rather similar. Japan calls it economic security, while in Europe more talk about strategic sovereignty. But if you look at the measures from securing supply chains and critical infrastructure to the support of strategic industries and high-tech research, you will find that Japan and Europe have much in common. The third priority of our presidency is healthy lives and we have to recognize COVID-19 is still rampant worldwide and we have to prepare for other diseases that might hurt us. Fourth priority, investment in a better future. That means in particular providing sufficient infrastructure to countries who are not yet developed in the way they would like to see it. Japan is a very successful connectivity investor in the Indo-Pacific and can contribute a lot to this effort by engaging in joint projects with other G7 partners. And the last point, we call it stronger together. In a broader sense, this revolves around the resilience of liberal democracies. Prime Minister Kishida has already spoken very well on this. We have to defend our freedom, our way of life, and we have in particular to fight attempts to disinform us through blatant lies. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you Ambassador Gates. Democracies collaborating, cooperating together in unison to challenge this critical moment. Thank you very much for that powerful message. With that is the end of the opening session, to be followed by session one. During session one, the theme is how will the globe, the world, respond to Russia's aggression? Let me introduce the panelists at this time. We welcome representatives from think tanks from 10 democracies around the world. Please, we ask the panelists to turn their videos on. From the United States Council on Foreign Relations, Senior Vice President, Mr. James Lindsay is here with us. From the French Institute of International Relations, Director, Mr. Tomah Gomah. The German Institute for International Security Affairs, Stefan Meyer. From Italy, Mr. Tori Greco, Vice Director of Institute of International Affairs. From Canada, International Governance Innovation Center President, Mr. Rohinton Medora. From India, the Observer Research Foundation, we have Mr. Sanjay Joshi, Chairman of the Board. From Brazil, Jaturio Vargas Fundação, Mr. Carlos Ivan Simonsen Leao, who is the Director. And from Singapore, from S. Rajaratnam International Institute, Senior Fellow Lawrence, Mr. Lawrence Anderson. Mr. Kudo, President of Gano NPO, will moderate this session. Once again, hello to everyone. In the interest of time, let me get straight to the point. I haven't looked at the news coverage today about Kiev, but I do believe defending Kiev is ever-present situation. This first session is themed around the global response to the Russian invasion. How to stop the aggression? How to achieve a ceasefire? Ultimately, while aiming for a ceasefire, the future of Europe and of course, future of Ukraine would have to be considered and how to respond to Russia, which caused invasion. At the minimum, the world has to put a stop to the invasion and make sure that actions of invasion, aggression should be stopped going forward as well. That is what I would like to hear inputs from the panelists, Council on Foreign Relations, Senior Vice President, Mr. James Lindsay, Mr. Tomah Gomah from French IFRI from Germany. Mr. Stefan Meyer, welcome. Welcome to the conference. I believe this is your first time. I would like, and also from Singapore, we welcome from S. Rajaratnam, Mr. Lawrence Anderson, is able to join us, fortunately for this session as well. So I would like to ask each of the panelists to speak for eight to 10 minutes based on the topical theme, after which the floor will be open to questions and comments and discussions. Mr. Lindsay, if you're ready, whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much, Kudo-san. It is a great pleasure to share this virtual stage with my distinguished panelists. I only regret that I am not in Tokyo to participate in the conference in person. Hopefully in the future that will be possible, but thank you very much for the invitation to speak. During my time, I'd like to make three points and raise two questions if I may. My first point would be to note the remarkable effort by the United States and its allies to use all measures short of the use of force to compel Russia to reverse course with its invasion of Ukraine. There was talk in the weeks leading up to the invasion of Ukraine that Russian President Vladimir Putin might succeed in splitting Europe. He didn't. Instead, the invasion has unified Europe. When neutral Switzerland follows the European Union's lead in imposing sanctions that just a month ago seemed unthinkable, and when non-NATO member Sweden joins with NATO to send weapons to Ukraine, you know that something fundamental has changed. Now, this denunciation of the invasion and the imposition of sanctions extends well beyond the transatlantic alliance. US allies, notably Japan and Australia, have been among the countries outside of Europe that have followed suit in imposing stiff sanctions on Russia for its invasion of Ukraine. My second point is that as impressive as this response has been, both in its coordination and its reach, the effort to economically coerce Russia into withdrawing from Ukraine has not been a united global response. Here I would offer one simple fact, that of the world's 10 most populous countries, only the United States has imposed sanctions on Russia. Now, most of the other nine do not have significant trade or investment relations with Russia. That diminishes the significance of their inaction in terms of bringing pressure to bear on Russia for its invasion of Ukraine. Of course, the exception, and it is a considerable exception, is China. To this point, Beijing not only hasn't condemned the invasion, it seemingly supports it. This is consistent with the February 4 statement that President Xi and Putin issued, stating that the strategic partnership between Russia and China has, and I quote, "no limits." As long as President Xi sticks to that position and barring a coup in the Kremlin or a collapse of the Russian army in the field, Western military resupply of Ukrainian forces and economic warfare will not change Putin's calculus. That leads me to my third point, which is that this war is likely to grind on. We may get short-term ceasefires, intruses, but they are not likely to last. The fundamental reality is that Vladimir Putin has begun a war he cannot win, but cannot afford to lose. His military strategy seems to have been to try to quickly decapitate the Ukrainian government. That clearly has failed. Russian military operations will likely continue until the eastern half of the Ukraine and possibly the entire country is overrun. That fighting is likely to be bloody and harsh, with as we're seeing quite extensive civilian death and destruction of infrastructure. I would imagine that the Russians will ultimately prevail in the theater of operations they choose, but like the United States in Afghanistan and Iraq, Russia is going to discover that combat is relatively easy compared to the occupation that will follow. Ukrainians are not going to submit to Russian force, even with brutal punishment. We can expect insurgencies and resistance that will bleed the Russian military in treasury. But of course, for Vladimir Putin, reversing course now and withdrawing forces would be an admission of defeat that could potentially doom his regime. Conversely, the video of Ukrainian civilians being butchered is going to deepen opposition in Europe, in the United States and elsewhere, that will make it even harder to generate the kinds of concessions needed to produce a diplomatic settlement because they will be construed as rewarding Russia for its aggression. All of this makes it very difficult to see how we can generate a diplomatic off-ramp for ending the crisis. So that leads me to ask two questions. The first is, can this conflict be contained to Ukraine? There is a very real danger of military confrontation between Russia and NATO. Case in point, yesterday, at least American time, was the Russian strike on a Ukrainian base just 25 kilometers from the Polish border. Escalation by intent or error hovers over all of these military operations and it is conceivable that should it happen, the war could spill beyond the borders of Ukraine. There's also the risk of Russian NATO forces engaging, even if the Russian military overruns Ukraine. Again, a Ukrainian insurgency is likely, perhaps inevitable, and the Kremlin will be convinced, whether it is true or not, that that insurgency is fueled and supplied with Western, i.e. NATO, support. The other question I have is whether Western solidarity can be sustained over the course of a crisis that is likely to drag out for months, if not years. Unity, and it has been impressive unity at the start of this conflict, doesn't guarantee unity at the end. Collateral damage from the sanctions are going to be felt unevenly across Europe. Likewise, the impact of the now nearly 3 million Ukrainian refugees entering Europe will also be felt differently across Europe. We can anticipate that President Putin will pursue various disinformation strategies designed to sow doubts in Europe and to pick up on divisions and complaints about inequitable burden sharing and the like. You could over time see legitimate disagreements emerge over strategy, tactics and timing and how to deal with Putin and the challenges created by the war in Ukraine. Now, strong political leadership and savvy diplomacy can potentially keep those divisions in check, but unfortunately, as time drags on, both of those could be in short supply. And Kudo-san, here I will stop.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lindsay. I would like to ask everyone to give us comments first, so Mr. Gomah from France, please.
Thank you very much, Kudo-san. Thank you very much for this invitation. It's a real pleasure to be with us to see friends, even if through screens this year, but I hope that, as it was said by James, in the near future, we will gather in Tokyo once again. I will start by the question you asked us to deal with. How should the world deal with Russia's aggression? And in line with what was just expressed by James, I would say that in my view, this war in Ukraine is accelerating the fragmentation of the world. And I don't see a unity of the world, to be honest, because as it was said, it's very important to analyze the countries who voted for abstention. And among them, there is the so-called BRICS, except Brazil. There is the member of the Shanghai Cooperation Organization. And there are also some African countries, very important in terms of energy supplies, such as for instance Algeria. So to put things bluntly, I don't see that Russia is so isolated, is so separated from the world. And I think that this geography is certainly announcing something in the future. An additional point, this war, this invasion of Ukraine has been made during the last negotiation for Iran. And we were apparently close to a new agreement. And once again, this negotiation maybe will be postponed, given the new Russian position. given the new Russian position within this negotiating process. So I have six brief points to fuel our discussion. The very first one is, given my background, you know, a sort of retrospective about Putin's regime and how this regime is fueled by war since its beginning. Let me remind that in the summer 2000, President Putin lost a nuclear submarine. After that, he gave revenge to its military in Chechnya. And unfortunately, the way of proceeding in Chechnya has been repeated in Syria and will be repeated in Ukraine. After that, we had the intervention in Georgia. We had the annexation of Crimea and the destabilization of Donbass. We had the intervention in Syria. And we have also the use of proxies, for instance, in Mali recently. For me, one of the turning points of the recent turning point to, how to say that, to anticipate, sorry, the invasion was certainly in mid-November, a decision taken by Russia to destroy one of its satellites. And that's give also a new dimension of this war. We are, in my opinion, in a multi-domain warfare. I will be back on that briefly. Second, the problem of Ukraine between Europe and Russia, that's not something really new. In a sense, Russia blamed the EU much more than NATO, to some extent, for doing silent geopolitics with its so-called Eastern Partnership. I remind you that since 2009, the EU promoted its Eastern Partnership towards Belarus, Moldova, Ukraine, Georgia, Armenia and Azerbaijan. And what is seen as the Eastern Partnership for the EU, it is obviously the Western glassy for Russia. Thirteen years after, we have six conflicts in these countries with a major war in Ukraine. Point number three. The situation is very, very serious, very extremely dangerous, because we are facing a risk of, I would say, vertical escalation and horizontal escalation. For the vertical escalation, there was a crystal-clear message from the Kremlin about the nuclear dimension of this conflict. And for the horizontal escalation, we know that Russia in the past made many transgressions, especially regarding some chemical weapons against individuals. But it's something we should have in mind, that's something also we should have in mind about space activities, as I said previously, or also things related to the cyber. Point number four, related to the consequences of disconnecting a country like Russia from, I would say, the Western part of globalization. And Russia is not Serbia. What does it mean? That means that we will suffer, especially in Europe, from counter-sanctions which will be taken by Russia. And as Russia was completely unprepared to the magnitude of the Western sanctions, I do think that we are unprepared to the magnitude of the Russian counter-sanctions. Once again, Russia is not Serbia. It's a permanent member of the United Nations Security Council, a nuclear power, a spatial power, a country which is highly important in terms of raw supplies. No need to elaborate further on that. But the very quick consequences, it's about its for the EU in terms of its energy policy, or to put things more bluntly, absence of energy policy since two decades. And the wake-up will be very, very costly for Europe. Just to imagine, to change, you know, the mix, I would say, in peacetime would have been very costly. But to do it in the current circumstances will create very strong damage for Europe economies and consequences for other economies. Last point, I think also that the decision taken, you know, by the West in terms of sanctions, we should discuss between us about that, because there is all the time between think tankers, you know, discussion about the efficiency of sanctions with different historical examples, such as, you know, South Africa in the past. But for me, the real debate is much more about, is not about efficiency only, but much more about the effects of this sanction on the war system. Because the decision taken against Russia, against Russian companies are very carefully observed by over-investor, namely in China, obviously. But also, you know, from Gulf countries, for instance. Because what was done by the Russians during the last two decades, and it's a point for the democratic countries, is the fact that Russians vote rule of law outside their country. And what we are doing right now, so it's an industry, believe me, and the assets of the oligarch will be very strongly defended by them. It's an industry with lawyers, with accountants and so on. So my point is just to say, I think we should very quickly think about the consequences of disconnected a country like Russia from, once again, the Western part of globalization. I stop there.
Thank you very much for the invitation. It's quite a privilege to be part of this in my group for the first time and can very much follow in line what James and Thomas said about the effects of the Ukrainian conflict and the Russian invasion in Ukraine on the global and European security order. But to start with, let me just emphasize that we shouldn't disdain sanctions as ineffective or insufficient reaction is somehow the introductory lines to this session implies. I think the sanctions imposed by the US, by the European Union are so comprehensive and far-reaching that they will have a significant and devastating effect on the Russian economy and will certainly curtail the Kremlin's ability to continue its military buildup. The problem here is here, and James and Thomas already pointed out that only a small number of other countries have joined the US and the European Union in imposing these sanctions. And this is also mirrored by the fact that 35 countries abstained from the General Assembly resolution on Ukraine. From my point of view, it is less surprising that China, Cuba, Nicaragua and Central Asian states did so. I think the real disappointment is that major players like India and South Africa, who regard themselves as democracies and strong supporters of international law, didn't choose to vote in favor of the resolution. I think if the world is not able to act decisively on these kinds of massive military aggression, the institution of global governance will fall apart. And this certainly brings me to the issue of what will be the global security order, the European security order in the future. With regard to the European security order, we will certainly move into a more, well, not a more, decisively confrontational security order, after we had tried to build up for 30 years to build up a more cooperative security order. Regardless what the preliminary end of Russia's invasion in Ukraine will be, the creation of another Western state like Belarus, the partition of Ukraine, or its full incorporation in the Russian empire, we will against here sharply divided Europe, probably again separated by a kind of iron curtain, this time along the line of the eastern borders of the European Union. And we will see a massive military buildup on both sides of the divided line, as already indicated by the German government's decision to increase its military spending by 50% in the next years. The crucial question, I think, for European security order will be, how reliable the United States will be as security guarantor in this order? And here, a lot will depend, of course, on the next presidential elections. Whatever the results will be, I think Europe is well advised to intensify the discussion about strategic sovereignty, as triggered off by President Macron. I also see a resurgence of our discussion in Europe about creating an effective European nuclear shield, also initiated by President Macron a while ago. The question of the American role in the European security order takes with the issue of the impact of the Ukraine conflict or the Russian invasion in Ukraine on the global security order. And the way so far neutral states will further position themselves will very much determine whether we will see an increasingly bipolar or multipolar world order. And here again, countries like China, India and South Africa will have to play a decisive role. If they are further seen as at least tolerating the Russian aggression in Ukraine, we will further move towards bipolarity, which will make global institutions more and more ineffective. And what that means in terms of a pandemic and climate change, I think everybody knows here in this group. If these countries, those who regard themselves or seem to regard themselves as neutral, can make up their mind and clearly condemn and isolate Russia and join the European Union and the United States and Japan and South Korea and several other states in imposing sanctions, I think we have a clear chance for effective global governance and of really revitalizing the global institutions which have been weakened in the past years. I stop here and looking forward to the discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lawrence Anderson from Singapore. Are you there?
Yes, I am. And thank you, Kudo-san, for inviting me to participate at the prestigious Tokyo conference. Like Stefan, this is the first time I am participating, and like him and the other panelists, I also like to express our sadness in not being able to join you and your colleagues in Tokyo. But good morning and good afternoon to my fellow panelists and to others, and to good evening, ladies and gentlemen from Singapore. This session is most timely, given the tragic events in Ukraine recently. And here, I would like to make three points. First, why the world must oppose the invasion. Russia's invasion of Ukraine contravenes the UN Charter. It is a clear violation of international law. Now, this is an existential issue to us. Ukraine is much smaller than Russia, but it is much larger than Singapore. A world order based on Maitis' right would be catastrophic to small and medium-sized states. And that is why we must strongly oppose, or rather, we must strongly support the principles of the UN Charter. The sovereignty, the political independence and the territorial integrity of all countries, big and small, must be respected. My second point is that Russia must be made to know what it must do and what it cannot achieve. Now, clearly, the fighting must stop. Russia must respect international law and withdraw from the Ukraine. Even if it captures Kiev, it will be difficult for any puppet government to rule without the direct support of Russian military forces. The brave Ukrainians will fight on, aided by supplies from many countries. Russia's occupation will be costly, with much bloodshed and deaths on both sides. At a time when the world is trying to cope with the global pandemic and severe economic dislocation, the war will only make things worse for everyone. Now, Russia's continued presence in the Ukraine will only invite further sanctions. The Russian economy is going through a severe slump. Russia's stature will be diminished politically and economically. It will become more isolated and find itself increasingly dependent on a small group of allies. But it's not just about sanctions. It's the way businesses and people in the world are responding. The exodus of companies from Russia will continue. It will be a long time before foreign investors re-enter into business relationships with Moscow. Ordinary Russians will suffer serious economic hardship. Now, sanctions alone will not persuade Moscow from pulling out, even though these are unprecedented sanctions that have been imposed. But they will contribute to not only the sort of pressure on Russia, but I'm very sure other countries that might be considering similar moves will then now think twice or three times with regard to this, because it's not just about countries joining these sanctions. It's about what those countries, especially the United States and the EU, will do to others who break these sanctions. Now, unless the war in Ukraine is resolved peacefully, it will lead to a permanent state of conflict between Russia and the West. Whatever Mr. Putin's objectives were before the invasion, he must know now that a passive occupation of Ukraine will not be possible. Nor would it be possible for Russia to go beyond Ukraine. Moving beyond Ukraine would entail a direct confrontation with NATO. This is too dangerous. NATO has strengthened its frontline members as a deterrent to Russia to show its resolve to fulfill its treaty obligations to defend its members. And this brings me to my third point, which is the pursuit of peace. I believe Mr. Putin is aware of all this. He is a strategic thinker, a strong leader who has built his reputation on having previously restored the country's strength and the world's respect for Russia. But the war is not going well for Russia. Even if Ukraine falls, the prospects facing Russia are bleak. So what will persuade Mr. Putin to cut his losses? No one knows what exactly is in Mr. Putin's mind, but it would not be wise to push him into a corner without a face-saving way out. What can the West do to persuade Mr. Putin to abandon his aim to take Ukraine? Some have argued that NATO might have been too ambitious in its expansion. Now, that does not justify Russia's invasion. But the West should look seriously at Russia's legitimate security concerns, even as they support Ukraine in its current struggle. This is not a reward for aggression. It's an attempt to find a way forward so that peace can be restored. It's an attempt to find a way forward so that peace can be restored and sustained for the long term. This will not be easy. How can those concerns be addressed without compromising sovereignty, political independence, and territorial integrity of not only the Ukraine, but those territories loosely termed the near abroad? How to address those concerns so that they are in line with international law? All sides will have to make sacrifices to endure pain and loss. Sadly, it is Ukraine that will have paid the highest price. To achieve a durable peace, Russia must abandon its plans of violent conquests and unsettling its neighbors. The West, in turn, must have the fortitude to stay the course for the long game. It would be a tragedy if here the thirst for revenge and the love of power triumphs over wisdom and the desire for peace. I will stop here now. Thank you. Kudo-san.
Hi, doma arigatou gozaimashita.
Thank you very much for that input as well. I wanted to ask everyone to share their fundamental thoughts. So, would like to hear from everyone else as well. It seems that, however, there are several issues that are being addressed. First point, as Mr. Anderson mentioned from Singapore. If there is unilateral change of the status quo, meaning that the sovereignty and territory are not acknowledged at all, then that is an erosion of the fundamental basis of international order. And that is a collapse of what the world as we know it. Is my understanding correct of your statement? And if we are to reject that outright, what should be done? What shall we do? What should the world do? And if there is, if that is a preemptive war or the preliminary war to protect, to unite, what would be the point of fragmentation or division? So, the international order must be kept stable as a premise. If that is a premise, in order to restore the international order that has been eroded, what needs to be done? What are the lessons learned from the current conflict? I think those are the points that can be addressed. Now, turning to Mr. Lindsay, leaving an indelible impression on me was his point that there is unprecedented backlash against Russia from the world. Even housewives or ordinary people are saying Russia cannot be forgiven. That's how much changed Japanese public opinion has made. So, a unilateral action causing massacre is impermissible, cannot be tolerated. And there is backlash against economic ties as well. In the end, Japanese companies, almost all of them, eventually would be forced to flee Russia. That is the extent of the backlash. And there is action that is risky also at the same time, I believe, which is not sustainable. And in the end, if the world remains divided, what will be the meaning, significance of the current action? Now, we have a second session on Taiwan, and there is President Xi, who has no respect for international public opinion. And can President Xi control domestic information, public opinion? Otherwise, there will be backlash domestically as well. This is what the current situation seems to me, and that is one of my awareness. And at some point, I would like to ask everyone else to speak. Now, we have Mr. Greco. His hand up. Mr. Greco, please go ahead. Mr. Greco, are you online? Mr. Greco? You're muted, I believe. Mr. Greco, please go ahead. It may be a connection problem. Mr. Greco, do you hear us? Do you hear the interpretation? We don't hear you. We would love to hear, we would like to hear from you as well. We can't hear you. Hi, Dr. Greco. Could you go to the bottom bar and select your language? You can find the interpretation icon or language icon and select your language to English. I think your headset or the microphone was not on, so... Yeah, could you turn on your microphone?
Can you...
Okay.
Oh, yes, 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 yeah.
Sorry for this inconvenience again. Thanks a lot.
Okay, all right.
For...
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, for inviting me to take part in this conference, Tokyo conference, I also hope that next time we will be able to meet in person. Sanmi, also, it is always a great pleasure to have this golden opportunity to share our views and ideas with all these distinguished speakers. Let me just leave myself on to one general consideration concerning the Ukrainian war and then perhaps the nuclear dimension and Tomas' mention. First of all, I also think that Putin has committed a catastrophic error in waging this war. But at the same time, and I agree with what SP said so far, all indicates that he will continue to escalate military action, not least because now, very clearly, it's his own political and personal fate is at stake. So, in this situation, I think we have three main overriding concerns. The first, it is clearly a priority. One concern is to prevent the aggressor from being rewarded. We, second, should make Putin pay the highest price for his aggression. Also, in view of sending other potential aggressor a clear message, and also Putin himself, who may, we know, be tempted or may have plans to attack other parts of the so-called near abroad or even other areas. So, that's a second main goal we are pursuing. And third one is to prevent as much as possible a spill over of the conflict and avoid a destructive escalation. I admit, and we are, I think, well aware that this is a very delicate and difficult balancing act to perform. But I would say also that there is strong resistance from the Ukrainian population and also the impact that we expect we'll have in due time. Certainly not necessarily now, although some signs of this impact is already evident, but certainly in the coming weeks. So, these two elements, I think, make us confident that this two-track strategy may work. Second, considering, concerning specifically the nuclear dimension. It's obvious that we have always all been shocked by the announcement by Putin that he has placed on altar its deterrent forces, including nuclear forces. This is, in my view, was a way to intimidate NATO country and specifically that the Western countries for interfering, as Putin put it, in the conflict. We have witnessed indeed other cases of much of nuclear power threatening the use of nuclear weapons. But this is, this makes this particularly worrying. The first time this happens, when the nuclear power making this threat has launched an unjustified war or aggression against a non-nuclear power. So, this may easily lead other countries, particularly non-nuclear countries, to came to the conclusion that nuclear weapons are the only way to protect themselves. It's unclear, of course, how nuclear weapons can be used in this type of war, even tactical nuclear weapons. But the point is that just the simple fact of threatening their use may have a huge impact on the non-proliferation regime. But if Putin gets what he wants, this perception, the nuclear weapons as the only instrument or assurance, may become even more widespread. And indeed, as you know, Ukrainian President Zelensky himself said that in light of what Russia is doing to its country, it was perhaps a mistake, the decision of Ukraine to giving up its nuclear arsenal. We also see that there are other reverberation of this war on non-proliferation, including, for instance, the growing difficulties we are now, that are now being witness to conclude the nuclear deal with Iran. So, and of course, you know that there were, before this war, a timid efforts by the P5 to at least reach preliminary agreements to establish new instruments to have a possible nuclear risk. This was particular, also, say, reach other agreements. It would be very important to make it possible a positive outcome of the non-proliferation Treaty Review Conference. So, the last point that is important to stress, and that indeed, before the war, during the difficult talks that several leaders of the West, European leaders in particular, had with Putin, we offered indeed a package that included also possible new deals, nuclear deals, arms control deals. But of course, this was part of what was rightly termed Helsinki II. So, not a revision of a new Yalta or a revision of the structured divisions situation in Europe, but one that necessarily should be based on the reaffirmation and consolidation of what we had built through Helsinki and other instruments, legal instruments in Europe. That's also, of course, now has been bluntly violated. And so, of course, this prospect has become a real, somewhat one, the prospect of signing or reaching an agreement on nuclear issue. But of course, we remain, I think, committed, if the condition then arise, to again be ready to rediscover also the nuclear environment in Europe.
Hi, doma arigatou gozaimashita. Ano...
Thank you very much. I see some more hands. Stefan Meyer, Mr. Meyer, are you raising your hand?
Yeah.
Yes, if so, please take the floor.
Yeah, I don't have any further comments to make at this point, but I have two questions. One goes to Sancho and the other one to James. Sancho, I would like to ask you to give us some insights in the discussion we have in Delhi and India, India's positioning in this conflict. I would be very interested in getting some information on that. And to James, James, we see a very high political mobilization in Europe on the conflict. I don't have the impression that's the same as the case in the United States, despite the clear positioning of the Biden administration. But there is a discussion in the United States whether Ukraine conflict and confrontation with Russia should really be the priority for the United States. But we should not refocus on the Pacific and China, perhaps you can also give us some insights here, what the discussion is about in Washington.
Thanks, Stefan. Actually, I was holding back my comments for the last session on that particular point for the simple reason that, you know, the last session is on how do you get back to the international order and where do we go from here? So, the substantive comments are leave for that session, which will also tell you about India's stand on the issue and where we are. But suffice to say, for the timing, what I'll say is, this is not the first time India has taken such a position. India took this position over sanctions on Iraq at the time the world was asked to come together. It took the same stand when the issue arose over Iran for various reasons and has taken again when the issue has arisen over Russia. So, there is, you know, there is certainly a long-term vision which India has of the world, which is behind this response you have seen time and time again in multilateral institutions. But I'll come back to this issue later when we talk of the whole idea of where we are going from. I have some questions, some disturbing questions for the panelists here. And I'd like to have some quick responses on that. See, what worries me from the conversation which I'm hearing is that there seems to be unanimity on the fact that there is an iron curtain which has been drawn across Europe. Not just across Europe, but the fact now is, this iron curtain is going to be drawn right across the world. If we are going to get into this bipolar world, then where do we go from here? We think, yes, Putin is a madman, Putin is unpredictable, and the rapidity with which this war has escalated, no one expected, really, for escalation, the ladder escalation to be climbed so fast in such a short period of time. First of all, there were talks about troops gathering on the border. Then we moved into, okay, these troops are not going to move in. Yes, the US was the only country which kept on saying that these troops are going to move in. Ukraine resisted that idea, Europe resisted that idea. And in spite of that, yes, ultimately Putin did walk in and has reduced cities in Ukraine to complete rubble, citizens are devastated. There are 2.7 million people fleeing across the border, and there is mayhem out there. Responses come, but responses come in the form of, again, we have a view on how effective sanctions are. We can discuss that later. Yes, a response has come, and people are being asked to join into this. But why, where do we go from here? No, the way things are drawing out, and if Russia is going to be completely cornered and has to be cornered to find any solutions, then where is NATO in? then where is NATO in this? How far, where are NATO's red lines? How far is it prepared to go? Is it actually prepared to get into a direct confrontation? Should Putin refuse to pull back? Should the worst fears come true? See, I find people getting completely trapped in their own insecurities. In a world which was trying to secure itself, we are finding ourselves in a situation where both sides are getting completely trapped in their own insecurities. Now, how do we get out of here? This is, this is not the answer. This is not the solution. And I think Lawrence raised that issue, that we need to climb out of this. How do we get communication back? How do we remove this complete breakdown in communication which has happened? There are some kinds of peace talks going on and between the two warring parties. Today, there are reports coming out that there is some optimism, there is some shed of optimism, some shed of hope. Do we encourage that? Do we discourage it? How do we encourage it? How do we allow it to move forward and how do we find solutions?
Thank you very much. So I think, Mr. Rohinton, you are raising your hand, right? So please take the floor.
Yeah, I do have a few thoughts which are best left for the final session. But I did have a question for the panelists, which bleeds into the next session as well. Is we keep talking about the West's reaction being a bit of a demonstration effect to deter others. And I'm wondering who those others might be. And I'm guessing that it might be a shortlist of one, perhaps China. And I guess, again, that takes us into that final session. But the question for us here is, is there anything that China should be doing differently? Or that the current Western coalition should be enticing China to do differently, to break this of current stalemate, which is, which is a bit of a bipolar world, as many of you have put it. But it seems to me that it needn't be and that the current sanctions regime, which has major outs in the Middle East and Africa and in East Asia for Russia, might change if there was some dynamic with China that would change. I'm trying to get my head around what that might be.
Thank you. Carlos, are you raising your hand? Carlos, long time no see, please take the floor.
Thank you. So all I should agree with everyone. I like very much that we talked today. Well, my question is very simple. Of course, everyone should be worrying about nuclear war. But then, what happens within six months? If we don't have, if we don't have a nuclear war? What is long-term strategy? We are seeing lots of tactical movements, no long-term strategy. Russia clearly doesn't have the economic clout to face both European Union and the United States. It may win the war for a short time in Ukraine. And then it will have problems of occupying Ukraine. This, of course, is a terrible, will be a terrible human disaster. But nevertheless, the point is, with or without Putin, what happens within six months? What is a strategy? What, how we hold to the fact that Russia is in deep economic troubles, that it is also, from its point of view, deep geopolitical geostrategic problems, that it has huge idea of that possible. So I don't think that people are realizing how much containment is important right now. But containment should evolve. You cannot simply cut Russia. Somewhere in time, you have to offer a bridge for Russia to come to more, more known state, if that is possible. The mass asked, what were the consequences of disconnecting Russia? The consequences will be dire. The economy there will suffer a lot, so will the European economy. But at the end, aren't we seeing a deeper phenomenon? Prime Minister Kishida pointed out to the fact that it's very important to defend the middle class in Japan because that is the basis of democracy. Well, that is true not only for Japan, but it's true for every other democracy that I know. And the middle classes around the world are suffering the impact of the rising of China, India, and our countries in East Asia. Has nothing to do with the war, it interacts with the war. Because we have this question of Taiwan. We tend to think about it only militarily. The one-belt, one-road strategy of China is clearly incomplete without Chinese domination of South China Sea. That is not possible. China is trying to replicate something that British stood 200 years ago, so-called string of pearls. I'm having a military basis now, but with investments to. But that is not connected to mainland China, for sure, without the dominance, strategic dominance of the South China Sea. And that has led to the problem of rising productivity in China, access to markets, worldwide competition. That affects relative reform of innovation among stations, amongst Europe, the US, and on the other side, China, India, so forth. So there are many issues getting mixed. We are only paying attention to Putin's actions, which may be racially, but not depending from which point of view you are looking at the problem. I don't know if Putin sees himself as a sour about Russia. But if he does, you have to remember that all Russians mean Yellow Russia, Russia, Ukraine. So, from a Russian point of view, from looking at their history, some reaction similar to the one he's having now could have been expected. And that was ignored. Of course, I'm not saying that one should always do what he wants, I don't agree. But you know, there is a need to have a lot.
Carlos, sorry to interrupt you. But I'm sorry, but we are not able to hear you very well. But until certain, sometime, we were able to catch what you were trying to say. So let me ask other participants to also join. Mr. Anderson, you have the hand up. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. I will try to be brief, but I thought I'll answer one or two of the questions that was raised by some of the other panelists. The first one is the question about if we accept what Russia is doing into Ukraine as a new way of defining the world order, what will this imply in terms of other countries doing a similar thing? And I think most people have identified that it's China. But my intention was, in not naming China, was not because I wanted to exclude them, but because it is not just about China. I mentioned earlier that it's about small states and medium-sized states. Not every one of us in the international community borders a superpower with nuclear weapons. But a lot of countries in the world border bigger neighbors. And the question of bigger is a relative term because when you are a small country like Singapore, we are 680 over square kilometers or 700 over square kilometers, almost any country is bigger than us. But the point is that most countries would border bigger neighbors that would have coveted these positions. So without subscribing to the notion about big powers will do what they can and thus must suffer what they must. I'm very, we are very sympathetic to the Ukraine because, and to all those countries with bigger neighbors, because when you have a bigger neighbor that covets your position, that does whatever it can to undermine your economy, undermine your success story and feels that, you know, it feels that your first priority has to be what is not in your interest but what is in the interest of your very powerful neighbor. Then I think that is something we do not subscribe to and the UN doesn't subscribe to, which is why I made the point that we need to follow the UN Charter. And we need to bear in mind, it's not just about China, it's about any small or medium-sized country that borders an aggressive neighbor. Now, the second point I wanted to address was, I think this was a point Sanjo you made about the world and others also made, that we are going to descend into a bipolar world. I'm not so sure about that because, and there are other analysts who would define otherwise, that we are not into the second Cold War, so to speak. I think it is clear Russia wants to dispel the post-Cold War arrangements vis-à-vis NATO and that threatens its security and its influence over the near abroad. And it is prepared to do, use force if that is necessary. But I don't think China wishes like Russia, I don't think China wants to dismantle the post-Cold War political security and economic arrangements. In fact, it has benefited greatly from these arrangements. But what it wants is a major say in reshaping these arrangements to acknowledge its rise as a global power. So in this case, I think there is a bit of a difference. We won't see the world broken up into the old Cold War situation. But I think we will see greater rivalry in how the rules of the game will change or will be modified to accommodate different things. Now, I don't want to go too much into the question of China and the question of Taiwan because that is going to be discussed by the next panel. But I want to say that basically China is walking a fine line. It is support for Russia. And that it is not clear that China is prepared to embrace everything that Russia does unreservedly. Clearly, it's taken the Russian line in terms of blaming the West for the invasion into the Ukraine and all that. But I think the point is that preaching is much more connected into the current global system and the way the economy runs and the trade system runs and all that than Russia is. And that the question is, China knows that the US and Europe will not cut it any slack should it violate the unilateral sanctions imposed on Russia. So, and given the fact, and this has implications for all of us here in Asia, because in most countries in Asia, our economic relations with China is probably number one in terms of trades and FDI flows. But there is a substantial link also with the United States. And we would not want to see this quarrel between the two. So it's not so easy to say that, you know, China will just simply abandon everything to, and get out of the system. But clearly, because of the effectiveness of sanctions, I am sure the Chinese and the Russians are monitoring an alternative payment system to SWIFT, an alternative payment system in terms of banking procedures. But what form that sort of alternative payment system takes, whether in terms of cryptocurrency or even barter trade or even in gold, is anybody's guess. But I'm sure they would be looking very closely at this. And one other final point I would like to make about Mr. Putin's continued persistence in being in Ukraine as well as risking permanent confrontation with the West. Because the only logical outcome of that would be having to move closer to China. But having to move closer to China, not in terms of the relationship that Mao and Stalin had in the 50s. But he would then have to accept being a very junior partner in that equation. And that, I think, would make him think two or three times before he wants to take that big drastic step. I'd like to stop here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have two or three minutes left. The question of China, we can deal with it in the next session. And the overall system wise, we can also deal with it in the last session. This is a question to Mr. Tom Gomar, and whether this stops at Ukraine and to what extent the NATO is prepared? And what is the ending scenario for Europe? What is desirable for landing scenario for Europe? And with that, we will end this session. So, Mr. Gomar?
Thank you, Carlos. I will try to respond to your question and also the comment made by Carlos about what about the next six months. I do think that, you know, Vladimir Vladimirovich made a calculation, in fact, in 2005, with the rejection of the EU constitution by the Netherlands and by France. And since that time, there is a calculation in the Russian establishment that, sorry, the EU will be on its knees before Russia. And for instance, Brexit was analyzed in this way. So it's basically the framework in terms of analysis, in my view. There is another calculation, which is that maybe President Trump will be back in 2024. And that would create new circumstances. And I think the polarization of the debate in the US regarding Russia is striking, even if I think that the Republican Party removed to the center to some extent. But that's this sort of calculation that the Kremlin has in mind. So now to respond to your question, I think it should be very, very, very direct, you know, what will be the consequences of destruction of Ukraine, similar to what was done in Chechnya during the Second War? And what would be the consequences of the dramatic military losses on the Russian And what would be the consequences of the dramatic military losses on the military on the Russian side? I mean, the figure delivered by the Russian Ministry of Defense. After five days of operation, which is around 500 killed people after five days. Is terrific. And it's not in a in a wish of transparency that it was made by the Russian military authorities. It was, in my opinion, a preparation to a very quick militarization of the Russian society. What is, it is what we are in front of us. And I do think that in the next six months to to follow up on what was said by Carlos. The question is, to what extent, what will be the possible reaction for Europe, for the US, for other countries? With a level of violence which will be comparable to the one during the Second World War II.
Thank you very much. So it's now time to close this session. And we still have, we can discuss in the next session and the last session. So we'll take a break here. So in Japan time. In eight minutes from now, let's take a break. And then we will move on to the session on the Taiwan news question. So let's take a break for eight minutes.